Before I call this meeting to order, I'd like to note that we have an interpretation services for this meeting. The interpreter for this evening is Mrs. Villagrana. Ms. Villagrana, could you raise your hand?
Okay.
And please ask her for a listening device if you would like interpretation services. Antes de llamar a la junta a orden, me gustaría notar que contamos con servicios de interpretación para esta junta, y la señora Villagrana está ahí atrás. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of May 2nd, 2023. Madam Clerk, could you please make an announcement about accessing the meeting and call the roll?
In order to participate in the City Council meeting virtually, please register to speak using the link on the agenda under Public Comment. To raise your hand to speak on a particular agenda item, please use the Raise Hand button in the Zoom Meeting portal. If you are using a phone, please press *9 on your telephone keypad and then press *6 to unmute your phone. When it is your time to speak, you will be requested to unmute your microphone and speak for the time allotted by the mayor. Your microphone will be muted upon completion of your comments. Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez? Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Here.
Councilmember Soto?
Here.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Here.
City Attorney, Mr. Watson, would you like to give the closed session report?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor and Council, as well as the public, those two items, Rodriguez versus City of Santa Maria and San Luis Obispo Coast Keepers and Los Paldras Forest Watch versus Santa Maria Valley Water Conservation District, information was provided to Council, no action was taken.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda this evening is a proclamation, and Councilmember Soto will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Today's proclamation is regarding Water Awareness Month. Whereas the City of Santa Maria maintains a robust water awareness and conservation program that includes community outreach, school education, complementary home visits, and suspected leak notifications. And whereas every industry, business, and resident can make a difference by conserving water at work, home, and school, and whereas residents of all ages, businesses, and industries of all types are invited and encouraged to implement just one of the many tips and ideas to help conserve and save water. Now, therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby proclaims the month of May 2023 as Water Awareness Month in the City of Santa Maria, and urges everyone to do their part to conserve and preserve water, this precious resource. And to accept the proclamation is Director of Utilities, Shad Springer.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Soto, thank you for this proclamation. While it's been a great winter with a lot of rain, and in fact, we have written the forecast for today and tomorrow, it is important for the community to recognize the importance that water plays in our community and the reliance that every living creature on the planet relies on water as a resource. So as we have an abundance of water this year, we're thankful for that, but we want to encourage people to continue to conserve. The Santa Maria groundwater basin is resilient, but it does take time to recharge. So while we have full reservoirs all over the state, it will take time for the groundwater to recharge, and we continue to encourage people to conserve, and we want to express our appreciation for the conservation they've done so far. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I think Mr. Springer is also going to continue with the poster contest winners.
Thank you. That's correct, Madam Mayor. I do have Michelle Ruiz with me here this evening. She will be assisting with the kids. We're excited this evening to present to the Council the contest winners for our 12th Annual Water Awareness Poster Contest. We had to take a hiatus during COVID, but we're excited to be back here in chambers. It's always an excellent opportunity to partner with the local school district on the importance of water, water conservation. Oftentimes, it's tied in with Earth Day and their existing curriculum, so it's an opportunity to share the message, and also an opportunity for us to partner in the community and provide prizes and whatnot. Tonight's contest winners will be recognizing six individuals. These are, as you see these projects from tonight, recognize that these are all third graders. So it's really shocking, the quality of the artwork and the message. So we're excited about that. Each of our winners this evening will receive various gifts from our sponsors. So each child will receive Boomer's Play Card from Boomer, so we appreciate that. Two Rock and Jump passes from Rock and Jump. Emerald Wave Media is providing Santa Barbara County Fair Tickets, two tickets each. The Recreation and Parks Department, I want to thank Mr. Posada, is providing gift bags as well. The Discovery Museum is providing a six-pack, a family pack of Discovery Museum tickets for the winning child to take, well, whoever they want, but maybe their family. And then the Utilities Department also is providing gift bags. I will say, American General Media was very generous, and the grand prize winner tonight will also get two tickets to Magic Mountain.
Should I apply?
So with that, I do want to thank our sponsors, and we'll move on to recognizing the various contest winners this year. So this is our 2023 Water Awareness Poster Contest. And once again, I'd like to thank, maybe a special thank you to the teachers in the school district who have taken on this extra work and encourage and teach the kids and really make conservation a way of life in the Santa Maria Valley. Thank you. So the first person we'd like to recognize is Filiberto Mendez Garcia. He is being recognized this evening for the most artistic category. Fantastic drawing, that's up on the screen. You can see in the upper right some great white sharks. There's some crabs in there, ships, people cleaning, and just really an artistic use of color throughout and the various uses for water. So thank you very much, Filiberto.
Good evening. Madam Mayor?
And Councilmembers.
And Councilmembers. My name is Filiberto Mendez. My teacher's name is Ms. Ba. I'm in third grade and nine years old. My poster is about water awareness. Water is important to all of us because we need it to survive. Plants and animals need it to survive. I like my poster because I worked hard to make it pretty, and I love to do art. Thank you for this award.
Filiberto? Filiberto, where do you go to school?
Adams.
Adams School. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the nice picture.
Our next award winner this evening is Emily Fernandez Salgado. And she is recognized in the most colorful category. Not only does she have the message of conservation, but also just fantastic use of color throughout, and probably my wife's favorite part to remind me in the bottom right corner is, "We need to wash dishes." So one of the important things that water is good for, at least around my house. So thank you very much, Emily, for this great poster.
Buenas noches, señor alcaldes y concejales. Mi nombre es Emily Fernandez Salgado. El nombre de mi maestra es Amanda Lee. Estoy en tercer grado y tengo ocho años. Mi dibujo es sobre la conciencia del agua. El agua es importante para todos nosotros porque la necesitamos para muchas cosas, como para lavar platos y vasos y para bañarnos, también para tomar agua. Me gusta mi dibujo porque es muy colorido y bonito. Gracias por este premio.
Emily, where do you go to school?
Allen School.
Emily, I want to tell you that I like your poster because it says that we should all be taking five-minute showers.
Excellent. The next student we'd like to recognize is Pilar Sierra for the Most Original Poster. So a little bit hard to see in the picture, but there is a superhero, you can tell, because it has a cape right there in the middle. And one of my favorite things about this being the most original one is it has a superhero. But in that top right where there's the little bubble, it says, "Useless water when you brush your smile." So we really like this one where, you know, we always talk about brushing our teeth, but just the idea that we should be spending more time smiling, it was just a great message to hear from a third grader. So thank you very much, Pilar.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Pilar Sierra. My teacher's name is Mrs. Long. I am in third grade and I am nine years old. My poster is about water awareness. Water is important because we all need it, including animals. I like my poster because it includes my favorite animal. Thank you for this award.
And Pilar, where do you go to school?
Allen.
Allen.
Thank you, Pilar. The next student we'd like to recognize is Vanya Perez Bautista, the Most Water Aware Poster winner this week, or this year, I'm sorry. So the judges really liked this because in the small print, it talks about ways to save water, but on the left, you can see the happy earth and the rainbows, and then on the right, the sad earth and the sad sun, because people are not saving water. So we thought this poster was the most water-aware, and we thank you, Vanya, for your participation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Vanya Perez Bautista. My teacher's name is Mrs. Jimenez. I am in third grade and I'm eight years old. My poster is about water awareness. Water is important to all of us because without water, nobody will survive, and it's used to cultivate our food. I like my poster because I think it is very creative and can help people understand that water is important. Thank you for this award.
And Vanya, where do you go to school?
Tunnel.
Tunnel.
Thank you, Vanya. Our next winner this evening is Mariel Espinoza for the Best Celebration of Water. So this poster really stood out to us. Obviously, it's colorful, but even from a long distance away, it's just striking. And the joy on the girl's face in being in the rain and the water just really spoke to us as a celebration of water and just a great poster overall. So thank you very much, Mariel.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Mariel Espinoza. My teacher's name is Ms. Brazza. I am in third grade and I am nine years old. My poster is about water awareness. Water is important to all of us because we need water to drink. Also, we need water to plant crops and flowers. I like my poster because it's my art style and I created it, and it's also detailed. Thank you for this award.
And Mariel, where do you go to school?
I go to Allen.
Allen, okay.
Thank you, Mariel. That brings us to the grand prize winner for this evening, Kira Paz is recognized. So what was great about this poster is that it has a comic strip on the left, How the Girl Saved Water. How the girl saved water was to tell her dad to fix the pipe, and he fixed the pipe. So I guess as a dad, I can appreciate that. So it had a very clear message on the left-hand side about the importance of fixing leaks and saving water, and then just the great, really, display on the right-hand side about the sadness of nature without water and the happiness with water. So thank you very much, Kira.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Kira Paz. My teacher's name is Mrs. Jimenez. I am in third grade and I am nine years old. My poster is about water awareness. Water is important to all of us because it can help in a lot of ways. I like my poster because it shows how to save water in a fun way. Thank you for this award.
Kira, where do you go to school? Tunnel. Okay, thank you.
So those are the award winners for this evening. We'd like, once again, I'd like to thank all of the students for participating. We had great participation across many of the classrooms throughout the district, and these six stood out. So good job to the students, so I thank you very much, and I want to thank your teachers as well. What's on the screen here is a larger poster that we made. This will be on display at various times throughout the year here in City Hall. And depending on what we go forward with various ad campaigns at the city, some of the artwork or the slogans on here may be used.
Do we send any of these posters to the schools?
To the schools.
Yeah.
So, good evening, Madam Mayor. The winning students get all of their posters back. They're laminated so they can have them forever. And then we do use the artwork in various campaigns. It's in support of water conservation themes, and we're very pleased to decorate our lobby out at the Utilities Department with the posters as well.
Okay, thank you. Could I have all the teachers that are here, and I know there's a principal here, but could I have all the teachers, please, stand up? You guys do a great job. You know that, but you don't always get the accolades and the praise you should have, but thank you. Could I have all the parents, please, stand up for these kids? Thank you.
I want to say congratulations again to Filiberto, Emily, Pilar, Vanya, Mariel, and Kira. You guys did an excellent job. I'm so happy and grateful that you guys are, you know, being so artistic and really telling a story with each of your posters. And it just fills my heart to see kids who are so artistic. Thank you, and congratulations again.
Thank you, Mr. Springer. Appreciate that. Great, great water, great resource we have. Next, we will have another proclamation, and Councilmember Escobedo will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This proclamation is for Compost Awareness Week, where as the composting councils of Canada, Ireland, Australia, and United Kingdom and the United States have declared the first week of May to be the annual International Compost Awareness Week, and where the City of Santa Maria Waste Water Treatment Plant has established a regional compost facilities with Engel and Gray Inc., where the city's biosolids have been composted since 1993, transforming organic waste into a beneficial compost product. And where as the City of Santa Maria Solid Waste Division developed a successful green waste collection program, diverting green waste and food waste from the landfill, conserving valuable landfill space, utilizing these valuable compost organics to build healthy soil and plants. And where this year's theme for healthier soil, healthier food, compost, focuses on the crucial role recycling our food scraps and jar treatments placed by creating compost, which, when added to soil, results in a recipe that makes our food more nutritious, the air we breathe cleaner, and our climate healthier overall. And where as the City of Santa Maria and Engel and Gray Inc. have created a partnership to serve the recycling goals of the Central Coast, and Engel and Gray Inc. have successfully taken organic feedstock and compost, the material for sustainable landscaping, horticulture, and agricultural practices. Now, therefore, Alice and Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognize the week of May 7 through the 13th of 2023 as Compost Awareness Week in the City of Santa Maria, as well as appreciate the efforts of the composting councils, extension agents, homeowners, landscapers, farmers, recyclers, public workers, composters, gardeners, and plant growers everywhere. And here to accept this proclamation, we have Bob Engel.
Good evening, Mr. Engel. Twice in one year, right?
Yes. My pleasure to accept this proclamation, and thank you very much for doing it. It's kind of hard to believe that we've been composting out there on Black Road behind the Waste Water Treatment Plant for 30 years now. And we just hosted the sanitation managers there this afternoon, or at noon, for a tour. They're having a meeting at the Waste Water Treatment Plant. It's my privilege to represent the United States Composting Council and accept the proclamation and bring the awareness because what we're really trying to do is bring awareness to the utilization of compost. And everybody has their green carts at home. We're putting food waste in them now, and we need to try to keep what's going into the green cart clean, and we need to try to utilize compost. And you're out in your gardening, when you're planting a lawn, or even just redoing a low drought-tolerant landscape, still improve the soil with compost because the soil will hold more water with the compost in it. We are having a big event a week from Saturday, May 13th, from 10 till 1. The city's going to be out there. The county's going to be out there representing and giving away, I think, some kitchen pails, stressing the food waste recycling. We're going to be giving away complimentary compost, so if you have a big barrel, or a bucket, or a pickup truck, if you come later in the day, we'll let you fill the pickup truck. But at 10 o'clock, don't come and drain us of all our compost. But it is all complimentary. We're going to have vegetable transplants. We're going to have, for all the kids, we're going to have potting soil, so the kids will blend their own potting soil and put a veggie transplant in there, and then they can take as many veggie transplants as they can carry home with them to put in their garden at home. So it should be really fun, May 13th, 10 to 1 o'clock, and hope to see you out there. And thank you very much for this proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Engel. Yes, Mr. Cordero.
Bobby, 30 years ago, when you guys started this, I was just barely born.
Me too.
Isn't it true, or close to true, that everything you're putting in there, we would have normally put in out at the landfill and filled it up, right?
Definitely, everything. Well, not quite everything, but almost everything.
Almost everything is now being reused and put back into the ground as opposed to filling up our landfills more quickly, right?
Correct. Yeah, we're really utilizing the organics to their best benefit. We're recreating the nature's floor out in a forest, basically. We just speed the process up. Like I said, some of the things that we take might have been left out, but like, for instance, we're a big partner with Winset. We take their tomato leaves. Their tomato leaves aren't available. Cattle can't eat them because of certain, there's a nitrate in the leaf that'll hurt the cattle. So they would have a terrible waste problem without us being there to recycle all their tomato leaves. And we were able to recycle the tomatoes and everything else also.
I guess my point is, is that we're not just growing small potted plants here. This is quite a project that's helping our community on several levels.
Oh, definitely, definitely. The city has utilized on the soccer fields over off of College and McCoy there, they've utilized compost to rebuild those fields many times because they just get worn, and they need to have their soil revitalized. Caltrans uses a tremendous amount on, like, Union Valley Parkway. It was 5,000 yards of compost, but we take it as far north as past Robles and as far south as Carpinteria.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next, we have another proclamation, and Councilmember Cordero will be making that presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This proclamation is a little different in the sense that there's a lot of communities in our country today that don't enjoy this as much as I think we do here in Santa Maria. It's for National Police Week. So whereas, all the promises America offers, none is more precious and elusive than the right to be free of crime. And whereas, the dedicated men and women who have chosen law enforcement as a career face extraordinary risk and danger to preserving our freedoms and security. And whereas, during the week of May 14 through May 20, 2023, National Police Week is observed to recognize the hazardous work, serious responsibility, and strong commitment of our nation's police, peace officers. And whereas, in conjunction with this important observance, the City of Santa Maria is observing May 17 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in commemoration with those noble officers who have tragically sacrificed their lives in the line of duty. And whereas, eight California peace officers are recognized as being killed in the line of duty during 2022. Whereas, these special observances provide all Santamarians with the opportunity to appreciate the heroic men and women who have dedicated their lives to preserving public safety. Now, therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor for the City of Santa Maria, recognizes the week of May 14, May 20, 2023, as National Police Week, and proclaims Wednesday, May 17, 2023, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the City of Santa Maria, and encourages all residents to remember those individuals who gave their lives for our safety and express appreciation to those who continue to dedicate themselves to make Santa Maria a safer place in which to live. Now, witnessed here in, and the Mayor of Santa Maria, Alice Patino has put her name on this, affixed it to the proclamation. affixed it to the, to the proclamation on the second day of May, 2023. And here to receive this is Sergeant Danny Rios.
I'm honored to be here to accept this tonight. On behalf of the aid officers, their families, behalf of Chief Snyder, all the men and women and families at the Santa Maria Police Department and those agencies across the nation, I'd like to extend my sincere gratitude and really thank you for this proclamation and recognition. We are going to hold a memorial event, May 17th, Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. It's open to the, to the public. Everyone's invited. It will end with, be followed by a Santa Maria style barbecue that'll take place about 11:00 a.m. Tickets are on sale for $11. All proceeds go to the Santa Maria Police Officers Benevolent Foundation and those monies are used for officers and their families locally during times of crisis. If anyone has information or wants more information on the event or the tickets, they can get al d'ami at extension 1307. And most of the information on our event is posted on our social media pages. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This item is not on the agenda, but I would, Pastor Nielsen has a presentation on Serve Santa Maria and he would like to give us an update and that was on the 20, held on the 22nd.
Yes.
And you can go ahead and just let everyone know what it is and what, what we are doing.
Serve Santa Maria is all volunteers. Oh, thank you. And we have, we had 14 different projects going on April 22nd, all volunteers working in, working together with schools, with businesses, city government, churches, the faith community. So yeah, it's a pretty remarkable kind of thing. And, and at the opening, I was telling the story of how we began 14 years ago and I realized with all the high school and college students in the audience that they were just toddlers when we started. And so we've been going quite a while. So let me quickly just take you through here. Where is the, this one here? So this is what the wall looked like at 647 North Broadway behind the Dollar Tree Store. And we were asked by code enforcement if we would help. We said, we certainly will. I wanted you to see that person right there in the middle of the screen is sitting before you in this area. This is Chun. I just think it's awesome when those of you who are sitting up in front and have leadership positions in our city and you're out there working, I think it sends big messages particularly to our young people. So this is what it looks like when you put about 30 people on a wall that was about 90 yards long. And we also painted the back of the Dollar Tree building itself. And this is our way of taking back some of the territory in Santa Maria. Students had a great time. Then we also had a number of different homes helping seniors out. We were asked again by code enforcement, behind this fence, this hedge was kind of overgrown and Manley is sitting right here. He's with the carpenters union. They always call me before these projects go public. What do you got? And they always take one. And this was their job and this is their crew. I think some of them already had left. They started at 8:00. When I finally got there at 10:00, they were finished. But it's just one of those things that helping out a resident who needed some assistance there to keep a water canal clear. This is another home, a resident, again, given to us by code enforcement. Obviously, her weeds and grass, this is her backyard. We even had Vinnie's Landscape Service, a gentleman who does this for a living, who mows lawns and trims things, came out, he calls me up, Pastor Carl, what do you need? I said, I need you at this house. We need guys who have trimmers, mowers, edgers. He says, I'll take care of it. That's the kind of volunteers we have. This guy was great to work with. I met him for the first time and he said he'll be back. Is this person in the room? Glenn is often here at the, this is the president of the Chamber of Commerce on his knees there weeding in the Carriage District. There he is off to the right. This woman in the middle of the screen with the dog called me about a year ago and said, I want to do something for my neighborhood. So I, I met with her, we walked her neighborhood. We did nine different houses in this neighborhood, mowing people's yards, trimming, helping them out. And the people from the Bridge Church, that man in the black t-shirt there, that's Pastor Justin Jacobs. Their church had not been involved prior to this, but he got involved and thanked me for doing it. His church had a great time. We were also out in Guadalupe this year. The maps that we did at Mary Buren and at Kermit McKenzie were maps number 29 and 30. I guess we've been doing this a few years. And I know, Mayor, that you asked me if there are any schools left. I think I can count them on one hand, the schools that we have not visited over the years and we hope to visit them in the next year or two. But Mary Buren had this map of the world that was very, very faded. And so we redid that, we did their hopscotch, this blue stripe around. This is what the world map looks like that we did out there. And I've now picked up the stencil to do this. I would like to start adding this to our school playgrounds in addition to the United States map that we have done. And so this is the United States map that we did at Mary Buren. There were, these were all students from three, I think, different clubs at Allen Hancock College. And so it's just awesome to have our college and high school students working together. When I finally got to Kermit McKenzie, they were wrapping up. There were a few students left. They had about 20 people out there, I think. And it was so remarkable about this, there were students from three different high schools here in our community, Ragetti, St. Joe's, and Santa Maria High. All of these youth were working together on another school ground at Kermit McKenzie, painting the United States map for them. That's the kind of stuff I like to see in our community. So we did their hopscotch, or I mean their four square. Then First Christian Church has been one of our very regular volunteer groups. They had a home out in Foxenwood that really needed a lot of love and attention. This was their second dumpster that they filled. And they, they have guys in their congregation who have professional construction quality abilities and they put new gates on her home. There was a very large oak tree that fell down in her backyard that we cleared out prior to this event. And so this was a team photo with their group. And actually, there's a neighbor who's right next door that the tree fell on their fence. She's out here working as well. That kind of cooperation in the community is just grand to see. Then we had another senior in the orchid area who had had some health issues, had a brain tumor removed. Her yard got away from her. We did this all over her yard. These were all, the weeds were probably 18 inches high when I first visited her and they were cleared out. And then I just have to say a word about this woman here and her son. These are members of the congregation where I go. They did litter pickup and thanks to Jason, I always email him and say, where do you want litter picked up in the city? We had three sites, but at the end, we added on a fourth site out by kind of Black Road and Bedaravia, Mahoney Road. That's where I sent this mother and son team. It was quite a mess out there. They filled up the back of her pickup. I just think, and so I said to her the next day at church, I said, how are you feeling? She goes, I'm a little bit sore, but I feel really good. And so, you know, she's dragging tires onto her truck and then we had other dumpsters in town where they dumped off all of this stuff. You know, really, I estimate, and now that we just had our evaluation meeting this afternoon and I had a chance to check in with everybody, I think we had somewhere between 250 and 270 volunteers come out for this. So really, the volunteers in our community are the heroes. Anyone can come. You can go on our website, servesantamaria.com. An email will be sent to me, you'll be added to our email list. We have over 1,000 people now on that list. Thank you to all of our volunteers, many of whom, of you who have helped our community leaders. But you can't do these things really now. It's got a lot more, it's gotten a lot more complicated and a lot bigger. But I want to say a shout out to Bedford Enterprises. They give us the dumpsters, the roll-off containers. They have done this for 14 years and never charged us a dime. It's pretty remarkable. And then you had City Glass who repaired a broken window for free. The yellow ones are the businesses, the orange is the city. I have to say, City of Santa Maria Code Enforcement gave us a number of projects. We completed all of those. City of Santa Maria leaders, I'm speaking to you right now, thank you for your leadership and the different ways you participate. And down at the bottom there, the Santa Maria landfill, we are the only group that I know of that the fees are waived twice a year for Serve Santa Maria. It takes all of us pitching in and helping together to pull off these things. And then Dunn Edwards Paint gave us a significant discount on supplies. The Fence Factory built the gates for the woman down in Foxenwood. Golden Donuts, okay, they're just good, all right? And we ate them all. We had, we'll have to get more next time. Home Depot has been a huge partner, giving us a very significant discount on all the paint for the schools that we did. My Place did the coffee Pepsi beverages for years now has been donating all the water that we use. And then the media is so kind to us. Santa Maria Times, we're on the front page, KSBY, KCOY, all these people are so, so very helpful. I just want to say a shout out to all of them and thank you. That's my report, April 22nd. That was our 23rd event. We've got our next event scheduled for August 26th. The Amberdine to Serve Santa Maria event. This is what we're all about. We love because God first loved us. It's very simple for me, friends. As the pastor of a church for 40 years, we're just loving our neighbor as ourselves. That's all we do and it has a huge impact. Thank you very much. And I must say, Madam Mayor, that you have quite an excellent staff. When Beth emailed me, she said, are you making a presentation tonight? And I said, not that I know of, no one's asked me. I said, but I tell you what, if I am asked, I'll prepare a little presentation, which I did. I'm doing the same presentation at a local club tomorrow night. So your staff is the one who asked me. Thank you very much for the time to share what took place.
Well, thank you, thank you. And thank you all for so much you do, Pastor Nielsen, because this would not have happened without you. And I still haven't finished reading the book you gave me, but it was, it was great. You put this all together and everyone said, okay, we'll go along with you and we would meet the Maldonado Center and you really have shown the leadership that it takes to put something like this together, so I thank you.
It, it's quite remarkable to me that all these people follow. You know, because when you're a leader and you're too far out in front of the group, you're just taking a walk. But when people follow.
Yeah.
Remarkable things happen. And so having been a resident of the community now for 25 years, I know lots of the faith community because I, but now that I'm retired, I'm, this is just one of my little fun things to do to give thanks for the life I have and for what Jesus Christ has done for me in my life. It's the way I say thank you and it blesses a lot of other people. Thank you.
Well, we in Santa Maria say thank you, Pastor Nielsen.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going to stay because I want to hear what Manley has to say because these carpenter guys have been really helpful to us.
The next item on the agenda this evening is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, would you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise printed on the agenda this evening. If you are participating via Zoom and wish to make a public comment, now is the time to raise your hand in the Zoom portal. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak form or request acknowledgement in Zoom. And Madam Mayor, I have five requests to speak here in the building. I have no written comments and no hands in Zoom.
Okay. First one is Alejandro Enciso, followed by Jose Martin, followed by Gary Hall.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Alejandra Enciso and I am the Deputy Director of Community Partners in Caring and Acting Executive Director. I'm here tonight to just say that Santa Maria never shies away of a volunteer opportunity. You guys have shown that resilience that comes and shows through every action you take, every vote you make. You guys are approving on the consent agenda, the CDVG grant tonight, and I just want to say thank you to all the staff, to all the committee members who supported us and to my team and especially to our volunteers here in Santa Maria. Without them, we wouldn't be able to give rides to any senior or bring them their food or take them to their appointments. So thank you for standing with our seniors in our community, those we serve, those that we don't serve, and those who want to join our team to support our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for my time.
Jose Martin, followed by Gary Hall.
Good evening. My name is Jose Martin. I work for Move Santa Barbara County, formerly known as SB Bike. Many of you know our community bike shop, Santa Maria PC Central. And as of four days ago, we have been open for over six years here in Santa Maria. We have, we first started providing our education program to six schools in Santa Maria, four in Lompoc, four in Santa Inés, one in Guadalupe, and one in Los Alamos. Now, we are in the whole Bonita School District in Santa Maria, along with the others I mentioned, on a very slim budget, but we are able to provide these services here in Santa Maria. Next, I want to invite you all to some of our upcoming events in the next couple of weeks. This Saturday, May 6th at 2:00 p.m., we will be doing a trail mix ride. Trail mix will be available. We will be starting at Santa Maria PC Central and we will be highlighting infrastructure for pedestrians and cyclists. So this month is Bike Month, otherwise known in the bike community as Cyclomania. So that's something that I wish to all talk about. And now I would like to thank you all for these new bike lanes that here in Santa Maria, as it makes my commute to work much more safer and much more enjoyable, such as the new bike lane at Depot. I also sent you all an email earlier today, just as a reminder, as well as some other events. You can also find other events for the county this month online at cyclomania.org. And thank you all so much for increasing our budget.
Thank you.
Yes.
Jose, just thank you, Madam Mayor. Just could you please let us know, you mentioned that you will be meeting at Warratt. Can you give the address? Do you want to?
So we're restarting at Santa Maria PC Central, which is at 310 East Oak Street.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Hall, followed by Diane Lappin, followed by Manley McNinch. Good evening, Mr. Hall.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members and staff. I sat back there and I tried to think of some way to segue nicely into what I'm going to say after all the good feelings. I apologize now. My name is Gary Hall. I'm a resident of Rancho Buena Vista Mobile Estates at 2135 North Railroad Avenue here in Santa Maria. I represent the North Santa Barbara County Mobile Homeowners Team, or NSB. I'm here again tonight asking the City of Santa Maria to join over 100 other California jurisdictions that have provided their mobile home park residence with protection from excessive rent increases and in that way helped maintain affordable housing for their senior and low-income citizens. You recall that on June 7th, 2022, motion was passed by council members Soto, Escobedo, and Cordero. Thank you again. That motion reads as follows, and I quote, "Following council discussion and public input on motion, direction was given to staff to work with community members and park owners, park owners, to examine enhancing the model lease agreement to see if this, if there is room for improvement and to look at alternatives." Since its passage, the Mobile Home Resident Representative Since its passage, the mobile home resident representatives have participated in three stakeholder meetings. But it has now been 10 weeks since our last meeting, and we are anxious to get the next meeting scheduled. A month ago, I mentioned some relevant legislation that was introduced in the current Assembly Session in Sacramento. Assemblymember Al Muratsucci introduced AB 1035, titled Mobile Home Parks Rent Caps. The park owners elected to use that bill as justification to pause our negotiations, which of course the residents opposed. We believe that it would be in our collective interest to keep negotiating and honoring the June 7 motion by working on model lease enhancements and looking at alternatives." Then two weeks ago, AB 1035 became a two-year pill, bill, and a pill with no passage possible this year. Now, just this morning, I received an email from Assistant Manager Hackelman announcing, and I'll quote, "Because there is another similar bill now in the Senate, they still feel that pausing is their best course of action and don't wish to continue with negotiations at this time." The "they" he mentioned is, of course, the park owners. Let's be clear, Santa Maria mobile home residents are looking for action. The park owners appear to be only interested in stalling and using delay tactics. It is time to provide protection to all Santa Maria mobile home residents presently living in unregulated rental market where the current model lease program has been ineffective in protecting homeowner equity and maintaining affordable mobile home housing. Thank you."
Thank you. Diane Lappin, followed by Manley McNinch. Good evening.
I live on the north end of town, 110 Riverside Court. If you want, I'm not afraid to say where I live. And we have a lot of problems with the hoods. It's a gang. And they like to invade our corner and the park and to race their motorcycles and cars behind my house. And I'm having a lot of problems with the guy that lives across the street from me. And his name is Robert Mann and his brother John, who claims he's an undercover cop. And I'm trying to get the police to help me write up some stuff so that I can go and get a restraining order put on these guys. I've had them spray poisons in my yard. I've had them follow me around and try to push me off of the street with their cars. I even got a truck so that they would leave me alone. And I don't seem to be getting as much help that I want to from the police. I have nothing against police. My foster dad, William Wingrove, was the Chief of Police of San Bernardino, and I respect the law very much, and I have nothing to hide. But these people are bullies. And when they don't like somebody or they feel that you aren't doing what they want you to do, they get nasty. And our park is becoming like their gang hangout. And we need the police to help us up there, even if it's just for their presence, because besides the things that you see, which I don't want to say on the intercom here, and the way that they have their motorcycles until midnight, revving around the corner, we need some speed bumps to put on hidden pines if we could. Just say 25, that's all they can go through there. Put something to stop them from revving their engine right around the corner of hidden pines and priskers. Something to help us. I'm not the only one. I could bring in the whole neighborhood, and they'll tell you, "It's like living in hell." I've lived there. We almost own it. Two more years and I own my house. I've lived there, and it started off a beautiful area. And right now, it's going to the hoods, and so they call, and they're proud of themselves. And there's even some that are working in the police department. Not to say that they are taking over it, but when you go in there, and I need to have some things made out, I need to make some things out so I get a restraining order, some papers where I can say what's going on there and why I want a restraining order against the people across the street. They're in my computer. They've hacked into my electricity. They can turn off my electricity. I don't know how, but they love to go up and down on my electricity. There's all kinds of things that they do there. And it's illegal, and they think they can get away with it. And as long as the police don't come up and step up and help us out there, they're going to get away with it. And they got a lot of people scared up there and afraid to talk. And I'm not afraid of anything. You know, if they shoot me, they shoot me. That happens. You know, I've been threatened. And we need some help. And that's all I'm saying. That's all I wanted to say. But if we could get some help, we'd really appreciate it. It'd be nice.
Thank you, Ms. Lappin. I will give this information to our Chief of Police.
He called me last week when I called. He said he'd have somebody call me back, and they never did.
Okay.
So I do, I need some action.
He will take care of it.
Thank you, Alice.
Thank you very much.
Have a wonderful evening.
Sure. Thank you. Manley McNinch.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. I'm here tonight just to start trying to bring awareness to our new training center that we're hoping to have open and ready for operation July 1st. Hopefully, we get our occupancy and everything in place on time for it. But by getting that training center open, we're already reaching out to the local school districts. Santa Maria High School is one of them. We're working to get our curriculum program in over at the high school so we can start getting students straight from Santa Maria High into the apprenticeship program and get them on their way to a good, high-paying job. Four-year apprenticeship program. They come out with the equivalent of a two-year degree that's transferable to different colleges. And they have no debt when they get out of it, and they're making upwards of $50 an hour as a journeyman carpenter. So four years out of school, they're making really, they can be making really good money. And we're looking to start bringing to Santa Maria and other areas around here jobs that are going to be promising mortgage payments instead of low-income rent. You know, we focus a lot on low-income housing and everything, but maybe it's time to start looking at getting higher-paying jobs into the area. And we're going to be here to help facilitate to do that. And hopefully, going forward in the next few years and stuff, we can start looking at maybe bringing some requirements from the city into the housing industry, because AB 2011 is going to be a big bill for infill and stuff. Sears Building's sitting there. I don't know if there's any plans for it, but that building would definitely fall into the AB 2011 category to help facilitate it and move things through the process. And it still leaves the local municipalities where they have say-so over what's going to be going on, unlike SB 35. So, you know, that's mainly the main thing I wanted to bring up tonight. Thank Pastor Nielsen for everything he does in the community. It's been an honor to get out and work with them and look forward to seeing if we can't make Santa Maria move forward and upward with the local youth and/or adults of medium, middle age, too. So have a good night. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you very much. And, you know, we will welcome you when you open up. I'm real excited. Just that's going to be great.
As we get a set date on it, we're going to send invitations to everybody to get you all in there when we have the grand opening on it.
Okay, great.
Because it's been a long time coming, and you guys helped out quite a bit making it happen. So we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
This concludes the public comment portion of the agenda. Before we move on, Mr. Stillwell, do you wish to make any comments? Moving on, the next item is the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, could you please read the description?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by rule call vote. With one motion, these items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Escobedo?
I would like to pull 11B1 for discussion, the Annual Technical Amendments to the Santa Maria Municipal Code, second reading.
Okay. Anyone else? Have anyone? Okay.
Is that for comment or is that for vote?
For vote.
Okay. Madam Clerk, could you read HB1, I mean 11B1?
Annual Technical Amendments to the Santa Maria Municipal Code, second reading, adoption of ordinance number 202302. The recommenda... Do you want me to read the recommendation, the full recommend?
That's fine. Yeah.
The recommendation is to conduct the second reading and adopt ordinance number 202302, amending various sections of the Santa Maria Municipal Code relating to obstruction of ways and paths, sound amplifying systems, mandatory organic waste disposal reduction, appeals of revoked or denied business licenses, criminal convictions and business license eligibility, bingo game licenses, taxi cab licenses, noise regulations, urban forestry, wastewater collection treatment and disposal, and electronic filing of campaign finance disclosure statements, and statements of economic interest.
Okay. Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And the reason I wanted to bring this back to a vote, it's in regards particularly the sound amplifying system portion of it. I do understand that having a speaker in a park, it can be disruptive, or having a big party without a permit, I get that part. However, I see these as an ordinance that can prevent our kids, small new musicians or people that want to become musicians, to practice at a park and find some place where they can perform. And also potentially as if we... So what I see is, we're going to make an ordinance to get people to get a permit so they can practice at a park. And a lot of people will, might not do it, and they might end up practicing at home. And then we're going to have, instead of just one small group in a park, we're going to have a couple of more complaints throughout our city and more people disrupted. So this can create more complaints in regards to noise. So I would like to request this recommendation to be amended so it doesn't include people that would just bring a kid that would like to practice at the park, maybe because they do not have a place at home, maybe because they live with two, one or two families and do not want to disturb their families or the neighbors. And have, you know, going through the, have to push people to go through a process, permit to practice at a park. It just, I don't know, it just doesn't make sense from my point of view. So I would like just to make a change in that, and when it talks about sound amplifying system, just specifically to speakers, to electrical sound systems, and not necessarily just an instrument.
Okay. Did you want to make a comment? I have a question. Yes. So does that mean to amend the ordinance further to stay amplified instruments? Or just, what is the request?
Yeah, just to, just lift the instruments, you know, just a soul instrument wouldn't be a part of this ordinance. It would be just people that will bring a speaker to amplify the sound of the, you know, connect a guitar, put in an amplifier to that. That would be something that I definitely think they would need to request a permit. But just for an instrument, somebody who wants to practice a guitar, I think that shouldn't be part of the ordinance.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I have an issue with that.
You need to talk into your mic, Mr. Clerk.
I have an issue with that. I mean, you just said, I want to make sure you understand what you said, that having these people at home disturbing their families, so instead of having them home disturbing their families for their music, they're going to go to a park and discourage the people at the park?
What I'm saying is that when you put people on a house to practice, it was just not going to be the families, but the neighbors. And we're going to be talking about the neighbor behind their house, and that's going to be more complaints throughout the city instead of having people enjoying a park, practicing instrument. And I don't think that's able to disturb people at the parks, because they would just be having fun, practicing as we all practice different sports and activities in the park. I think that parks are, and I appreciate that during the pandemic, we kept them open. It's a place where people, our community, have an opportunity to express themselves and have some fun. And I don't know, I just see these ordinance as a barrier to let people practice and learn a new instrument. So that's my concern.
Okay. Do you want to comment on that, Mr. Stillwell?
Just, I could clarify that the ordinance proposed is that a people, group of people or organizations shall not operate any sound amplifying system, including but not limited to portable speakers, amplifiers, drums, or other musical instruments within a park except upon approval. Or, and so the source of the instrument or the volume does not constitute a substantial source of annoyance to other people. So it doesn't prohibit the use of the instruments in the parks. If they are going to be loud, we ask that they work with wrecking parks as part of their reservation. And if they're not going to be loud, that this ordinance wouldn't prohibit them.
So you're saying that if I have this Santa Maria, a group of the Santa Maria High School marching band to go and practice for a contest at a park, they're going to make a lot of noise. So they will need to go to wrecking parks, building, request a permit. I just, I just don't think that's an ordinance I would like to vote for.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion for the change, and then we'll see where that goes?
Yes. I just wanted clarification. So the way I'm reading it, section 10-2.05 says sound amplifying systems. It says that an organization operate any sound amplifying system and list what is included, what includes amplifying. It doesn't list regular instruments. So I think it already accomplishes that, the way I'm reading it. Like, I could go to the park right now and play my guitar without an amplifier, and I'd be fine.
Actually, it does include it, and we talk about drums.
It includes drums, but...
And so it just leaves you in a position that if you make a lot of noise with your instrument, then you will need to do an application. And yeah, just, I would like to make the motion to amend this recommendation so it does not include, or at least put it in the ordinance that it does not include people that want to practice, kids that want to practice, just...
Musical instruments.
Exactly. And just some, I mean, if they want to throw a party and put speakers, I would definitely need, I think that it's appropriate to go through a permitting process, but just instruments that I don't think that they should be part of the ordinance. Thank you.
Yeah. So I guess we could get rid of the parentheses where it says, "including but not limited to portable speakers, amplifiers, drums, and other musical instruments within the park." So if we get rid of the parentheses language, then no one can operate any sound amplifying system, period. We could do that.
I would do that.
Do you want to make a motion?
So he already did.
Okay.
So what is to define if someone's going to be there practicing or if somebody's just going to be there having a party without amplified system?
No.
Not yet. I think we're still...
Okay. Mr. Watson?
If I may, the current ordinance is directly what you just described, without the parenthesis. And as I was advised by the Park and Recs Director, one of the purposes of the amendment is because there are groups not practicing, but rather coming for events and that sort of thing, and in essence, taking over the park with the sounds that they provide. And so that was the purpose of the amendment, was actually to incorporate this language so that there would at least be a recognition that when there is an event with a planned musical element, that they would, there would be some coordination through parks recreation. That's really was the purpose of it, was not to, and recognize that these ordinances are to be utilized by the discretion of the individual officer who's called out. And the key here is not what causes it, but what's the impact to others. And so providing additional definition to the impact to others eliminates someone saying, eight guys with trumpets out playing in a park, although they don't have an amplification, they can be quite loud. Won't say annoying, just loud.
Right. So how could we distinguish that from eight kids going out and getting together and practicing their instrument?
And learning how to play a bagpipe.
Yes. So I think that is problematic.
It kind of, you know, it depends on where you see it. You can see it from that perspective, but also you can see it from the perspective of having a small group that is starting their career, or they want to start practicing, and they make a lot of noise. So I just don't feel comfortable with this change.
Do we have that problem right now? Is that why you're bringing that up? Is there an issue right now?
Yeah.
Oh, one minute. Mr. Passada is going to speak to this. Oh, one minute. Mr. Posada is gonna speak to this.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Yes, it is an issue right now in the community. We received several complaints about loud music in the parks. I'm not sure how many of them end up over at the police department, but specifically it's...
Large groups with drums and horns that occupy a park. Sometimes it's, as City Attorney says, it's sometimes it's for events. Sometimes it is individuals who are practicing. But we're really not seeing the youth that Councilman Escobedo is talking about out there. These are pretty much organized groups that are out playing their music. We just want to be able to have some level of control so that if there is an issue, we know that we can contact Mr. Smith and it's his group and we can say, hey, you know, maybe you guys could tune it down. Or, you know, we don't have that right now. Basically, when either the Rangers or the police officers respond, you're out there with a group of people and, you know, oh, he's in charge. No, they're in charge. We can't figure that out. So that's the purpose for the request amendment to the ordinance. We really, over the years, have really, as City Attorney pointed out too, it's the officer's discretion, you know. Are they causing a problem if there's no one else in the park? Or maybe we didn't get a call. Then chances are they're not gonna get contacted. But right now, at least we need to be able to know who the people are. And that's the reason for the permit. I don't believe there's even a fee associated with the permit. It's basically coming into the office. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'll do this one separately. And discussion? I just think it's important that when you have an issue and it becomes an issue for Recs and Parks, because they're the ones that are gonna be getting... Well, we'll get the complaints too, that they do have some kind of level of control, especially if somebody calls to have the police officer go out and then the police officer says, I'm sorry, there's nothing I can do because there's not an ordinance. So, anyway, any other discussion? Hearing none?
Madam Mayor, I have a clarification on the motion by Councilmember Escobedo. Are you referring to removing the term "and other musical instruments"? Or are you referring to removing the entire added section, including but not limited to portable speakers, amplifiers, drums, and other musical instruments?
Just musical instruments.
But everything else stay?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
No, that's, that would be part of the... Oh, drums and musical instruments.
Okay, so what remain, what would remain would be portable speakers, amplifiers, and that's it of that sentence? Okay, of that added sentence. Okay. Okay, I understand. Councilmember Escobedo?
Hi.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
No.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
No. Okay, motion carries. Okay, so moving on.
So just for clarification, if I may. We won't need another reading because it is an insignificant change. But to be clear, the new sentence will read, amplify, sound amplifying systems, including but not limited to portable speakers and amplifiers, in parenthesis. We'll make that change before it's published.
Are we able to say, well, it'll be...
Musical instruments will be removed.
Drums and musical instruments will be removed.
Right. Okay, thank you. Okay, now I need a motion on the remaining, where there's rest of consent calendar.
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Okay, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to approve the remaining consent calendar. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye. Motion carries. So next we have a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider the acceptance of a grant award from the Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Japanese Community Cultural Center and receive an update on the proposed development of the historic Smith Inos House grounds and location of the Japanese Community Cultural Center upon the park site.
Staff report is to be made by Director of Recreation and Parks, Mr. Posada.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Good evening again. We have a unique opportunity tonight, and that's to accept money from the federal government, something that's always a good thing. In the staff report, we mentioned to you that we had an opportunity to meet with the staff of Congressman Carver Hall, gosh, probably almost a year ago now. And one of the requests was that they look at a federal earmark for the Japanese Community Center project. Councilman, or rather Congressman Carver Hall's staff and Congressman Carver Hall got ahold of our, our... Sorry, I'm gonna draw a blank on his role. Our consultant in Washington DC, our lobbyist, and they worked out the agreement. And so tonight, what we're asking you to do is adopt a resolution that allows the city to accept a $500,000 contribution from the federal government through the Department of Housing and Urban Development to be used towards the construction of the Japanese Community Center portion of the Smith Inos project. So it's, it's just a great opportunity for us. I'm sure you all recognize that. And I'll answer any questions you might have about that component of the presentation.
Any questions? None.
So moved, Madam Mayor.
All second. Happy.
Okay, no discussion? Okay, we'll take the money. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye. Motion carries.
So the second part of the presentation is kinda to give you an update on the project and where we are. We've gotten a lot of community interest in the project since we started moving it along, including the house renovation and the establishment of the grounds. So the community center is a big portion of that. Tonight, I have two representatives from the Santa Maria Japanese Community Center, Inc. organization, the nonprofit that donated back in 2022 $300,000 towards the project. Tonight, I have Joanne Spencer here and Linda Matisson, and they're representing the Board of Directors of the organization. So I want to welcome them and thank them for being here. Probably the best way to do this, if Beth could help me out here, is to give you a little quick video overview of the project. So this is the future look for the area. Public Works has recently moved ahead with Phase One, which is the construction and groundwork around the site. You're gonna be going into the lobby of the community center. The Japanese Community Center, Inc. group has commissioned a large art piece to go in this lobby. The display cases that you see off to the sides will be where they'll be displaying artifacts from the history of the Japanese community members in the Ise generation here in the valley. This is about a 7,800 square foot meeting space that will be part of the building. It opens up through a grand opening out into the formal garden area and patio. There is a kitchen facility, just a great place, a different venue. You know, typically our venues are gymnasiums. This one is just specifically designed to be an event space. You'd be able to go out onto the patio area. The great lawn area will be there with the historic Smith Inos House in the background. The design, the plans, everything is in, has been completed now. We have permits, so we're all ready to move and have handed the project off to Public Works for the formal bidding process. Obviously, you know, the trees are growing in this picture, so it'll take some time to get there. But it's gonna be a great addition to the facilities that we have available to our residents and for other groups to come in and use the facility for public meetings and spaces. Bless you. We're gonna be coming up on the house in just a second. And so you might notice a little bit of work happening at the house right now. We are reinstalling the detail work. You know, there was tons of woodwork that was done on the house that had to be removed in order to do the retrofit. The house is now seismically retrofitted, so, you know, it won't fall down, although it hasn't fallen down in over 100 years. But, you know, it's for sure gonna be there for a while. We've put in, in preparation for a complete paint job. Right now, we have a, the house is wrapped in a sealer and then it'll have a complete paint job that... We have a local painter who has donated his time and a local paint company that is donating the paint for the project. As the project moves forward, as I mentioned, Public Works is working on the grading and parking lot and public infrastructure kinds of things that's going on right now. The next phase will be to move to the construction of the community center and get that out to bid. And then the final phase will actually be the actual finishing off of the interior of the house. Right now, it's pretty much a skeleton inside. Great community support, several pieces of antique furniture have been donated to us to use in the house. And it's just been a great project. Had a meeting with, or had an opportunity to present to the daughters of the American Revolution a couple of weekends ago. They donated a huge flagpole that you saw kind of depicted there. So it's a great community project, typical of Santa Maria, where people are just stepping up and helping out. So that's my update. And if I have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Like, how old is the house actually?
So 1886, I believe, was the actual building of the house. I'll have to look at my notes, but that is about the period.
In 2086, it'll be 200 years.
Really? Okay.
Thank you.
137 years old.
Any, no other questions? Oh, yeah. Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam. Actually, I was wondering if the board members might be interested on giving some comments about it? Or you wanna take one minute to let us know?
They're a little shy.
Yeah.
Thank you. I just wanted to say a few things. My grandparents were in the group of Ise, the first generation, that started a school to, for the, to teach the Japanese language and pass it on to the next generation. That was their goal. So they first had a Japanese community center on, oh, I don't know what street that was, but it was called the Gakuin. And so that was there for a long time. And then they decided that they would sell that. And when this new project came up, we would be able to go into this nice community center with the city. But it is our club's goal just to continue the culture and the language of the Japanese for the Nisei, or my parents' generation, and I'm Sansai, but now there's like fourth or sixth generation. And it's really hard for us to pass all that on without having someplace to meet. So this is the perfect place, and we thank you for allowing us to be part of your project.
Now, I want to ask you a question, because people have asked me. So when they were passing on the language and other things culturally, the kids met after they attended school, right?
Right. And they went to that Gakuin to learn Japanese language. Actually, I went there on Saturdays, you know, to learn. But unfortunately, I can understand everything, but I don't speak very much Japanese. But maybe I'll start taking classes when they have them at the new center and can learn, so...
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Matisson, for being here. And I want to thank Margaret Cooper and her son also for being here. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Posada. And I noticed in your rendering, as the wind wasn't blowing.
The wrong direction.
Okay. Okay, the next item will be a report by City Manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. So the next meeting of the City Council is May 16th. We'll have the proclamation for rodeo days. And then we have a presentation on the point in time count, the recent January count of our unhoused people in the community, and the third quarter financial report. I also want to note on June 6th, the council will receive an update on pavement management and our road condition and an update of our pavement management plan. That concludes my report.
I know, I've been getting a lot of questions, and I'm sure some of you, about all the potholes, but we have a plan, so stay tuned. Okay, let's do oral reports of council members. Ms. Soto?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. On Wednesday, April 19th, I, there was a meeting that I attended. I have it on my calendar as council workshop interview. And then on Friday, the 21st, we had interviews regarding the Fire Department Master Plan. On Wednesday, April 26th, we had the Downtown Revitalization Committee meeting. And this morning, or this afternoon, there was a meeting to prep for the quarterly schools meeting that's taking place tomorrow morning. That is all I have to report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Aguilar Hernandez?
Yes. On April 19th, I attended the SB CAG orientation and the meeting for 21 council member workshop. The same day I had the meeting with the Fire Department Master Plan, I attended the Downtown Revitalization Meeting on April 26th. On April 28th, I attend, I went to Vandenberg for the quarterly awards. It was very loud. They show their spirit. The winners were the people who had the spirit fingers, which was cool. And then I also attended the Channel Counties Division Annual Dinner in San Luis Obispo.
Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On April 21st, I was interviewed for the Fire Department Master Plan.
Okay, Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the 19th, I was, did a workshop interview for the council. I think that's gonna be a good program when it finally gets going. Then on the 20th, I went to the, I went to the Public Works barbecue. However, I couldn't get in. They had it all locked up. But I was there, and I saw them inside eating. Then I did, I was at the, for the airport appreciation, meeting with a young lady from the airport, the consultant group that is trying to bring more airlines to the, commercial airlines to the city. And that was a good meeting. That was here at the City Hall. On the 26th, I was at the Econ Alliance meeting in Solvang. And it's just a bad two weeks for me, because after that, I went to the redevelopment meeting down at the library. And I saw Ms. Soto there and talked to her about it. But I messed that up too. I got there at the end instead of at the beginning, so... I don't know what it is. Maybe that's just me. On the 27th, there was a CCWA meeting. And I attended that meeting with Mr. Springer. And I also attended the meeting out at the base with Maribel. And she is absolutely correct. It was very loud. Maribel has one of those fancy watches that tells you all kinds of things. And her watch said, if you continue listening to this at this level, it's gonna damage your ears. So, so I don't have one of those watches. I just plug my ears. And later on, after that meeting out at the base, I attended the Cal Cities meeting up at, up in San Luis Obispo, which was also an informative meeting. And that's it for me, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cordero, I know what's happening to your calendar. It's mercury retrograde.
Yeah, Mr. Escobedo?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam. I just want to add that barbecue was great. It was really good, Mr. Cordero.
Well, thank you very much.
Just, yeah, shout out to the Public Works team. It was a, it was a fun day, and, but yeah, I, you missed it, but next year, we'll, we'll meet up outside.
Okay, April 18th, I did the Ben Hayes Show. The 19th of April, I attended the Mayor Councilmember's Department Roundtable. On the 21st, I did the city leadership of Santa Barbara County. And on the 24th, I did a meeting on housing affordability. On the 25th and 26th, I had the privilege of going down to Los Angeles with our attorney and our, and Chad Springer from the Water Department on a settlement that we're discussing. The 27th, I did a joint cities-county affordable housing task force, attended the League of Cities meeting at the Madonna Inn. And then this weekend, I didn't hear anyone mention the strawberry festival, and you should all be ashamed of yourself.
Oh, I forgot I went to Co-...
So I attended the strawberry festival on Saturday and Sunday, and I haven't had a frozen, a frozen banana with chocolate on it probably in 20 years.
Wow.
But the, I took my mayor's youth task force kids, and they worked the strawberry festival for the California, California Women of Ag. We worked that. And we went through, I don't know how many flats of strawberries, and they were all given for tasting, anyone that wanted to taste strawberries. And then yesterday morning, met with the people from the West Coast Customs Car Show. That'll be May 26th, 27th, 28th, and that Friday night, they will be doing the cruise down Broadway, and so people line up on Broadway, and it's, cruise starts, I think it's, is it 6 o'clock? 6 o'clock on Friday night? Can't remember. Have it written down someplace. But anyway, the cruise will be going down Broadway and will last for a couple hours. And Chief Snyder, you should know that, because you'll be, you'll be having your, your motors out there for that. Anyway, Matt, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Okay, there's this one. I forgot.